I'm going to call the live candidates back. April, not April, the March bid, the city council meeting in order. And that's the parking power room.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mr. Lydon?
Here.
Dr. Middlebrooks?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Posey?
Here.
Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
We could have a clerk if you will send the invitation and pose it to her place.
Let us pray. Lord, we come to you today with grateful hearts for our countless blessings. Thank you for the privilege of living in this great country and for the freedoms we enjoy each day. Bless and protect those who sacrifice so much for our freedom. You have showered your blessings on this city and we pray that you will continue to bless its citizens, leaders, and employees. And we ask that you would bestow your wisdom and guidance on the mayor, council, in their decision making. In your name we pray, amen.
So you can play.
Under the leadership of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone is ready, I'll take a motion. Do you approve of that?
Fucking hell.
Motion in a second. I don't care if you say aye.
Aye.
In the report section, we first have a report from the Penn Women about the art gallery here at the city council.
Y'all hear me, everyone? I'm Winnie Cooper, one of the co-chairs for the Penn Women's 2018 Art Show out here in the gallery. It's indeed an honor for me to be here this evening and invite all of you to view our Penn Women's Annual Art Show 2018. The exhibit will remain through March and April and can be viewed during the weekdays. The art show includes thirty-four pieces of artwork and fine crafts by sixteen different women artisans. Many different media and techniques are included. The National League of American Penn Women originated in the year eighteen ninety-seven in Washington, D.C., so it's a hundred twenty-one years old. Its membership is made up of professional women artists, writers, and musicians. Members are accepted upon fulfilling certain criteria. The headquarters of the organization still resides in Washington at the Penn Arts Building. Some of the past members have had very illustrious careers. One of the founding members was Marion Longfellow Adonahue, who was the niece of the famous American poet Henry Wadsworth Longfellow. Jan Harris from Birmingham is a current resident of the Birmingham branch of the Penn Women. This group includes twenty-five members from Hoover, Alabaster, Mount Brook, Holwood, Bestavia Hills, Leeds, Pinson, and Trussville, and Saks. Pat Dickis, a Hoover member, had her beautiful painting featured on the cover of The Penn Woman, our national magazine recently, and one of her pieces of artwork is in this gallery today. I want especially to thank Hoover for the use of the gallery and the help of its personnel, Laura Salder Schalmer, and the city staff, and also for the expertise and time of Jennifer Marshall from the Hoover Libraries. Thanks to Carolyn Kohler and Linda Chastain of the Hoover Arts Alliance for its support and help in securing the gallery space. And of course, I would be remiss if I did not give special recognition to our Penn Women's Art Committee co-chairs, Sandra Davis, Marion Cohen, and Joyce Byrd, and Teresa Peterson. On a personal note, if I might, I feel very fortunate and grateful to be a resident of the city of Hoover. I'm mostly, I'm no stranger to Hoover City Hall. From volunteer work with the Beautification Board in the nineteen nineties, Hoover Arts Alliance, Service Club, et cetera. I know we have ongoing complex problems to work on and work out at any given time. I've lived in the northeast, the northwest, and the midwest, but I feel this is one of the best places in the country in which to live. I'm thankful for the opportunities it affords for all of us. Please, just remember where we came from and where we need to go, and then keep on working for the good of all of us. Thank you very much.
Now we've got a number of candidates for a few elected positions. Some of those, some of us can't vote in, some can. And we're going to start off with Mr. Bill Beach, candidate for Jefferson County District Attorney. Please keep for about fifteen, twenty seconds.
Everybody else gives two minutes, I give twenty seconds. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank y'all for allowing me to be here. I really, really appreciate being able to say a few words. My name is Bill Beach. The reason I'm here is because I have a June fifth primary that's very, very important to me. I need your vote, I need your support, I need to win that primary. A little bit about myself for those of you that don't know. I was a police officer in Birmingham, eighteen years in the district attorney's office. I've always worked well with law enforcement. You're not going to find, I don't think you could talk to anybody, law enforcement, wherever they are, but especially in Hoover, they wouldn't want me to be their district attorney. And I'll tell you why. Because I'll show up. If you need me, you haven't got to find me, I won't be in the back of the courthouse hiding. If you need me, I'll show up. Everybody, I don't mind you asking, anybody that knows me, if you need me, I'll be there. That's not some special thing, that's just, I like it, I enjoy it, that's how I get myself working. So, he's got a great police department here, great council, great mayor, everything's good in Hoover, it's my hometown, but I'm running countywide and I've got to have everybody's help to support. Now, one last one. When Hoover asked me, I was school board for ten years, been the president, chairman of the personnel board for a long, ten years, but none of those jobs paid, I just did it, and I enjoyed it. And I've always been there for Hoover, I always will be, but I need Hoover to be there for me too. I mean, I'm telling you, that's my real support. So, thank you for letting me be here, and we've got some great candidates coming up. Anyway, just thank you, I appreciate it very much.
Next we have Mr. Raymond Johnson Jr., also a candidate for Jefferson County District Attorney.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Raymond Johnson. I'm seeking the position of District Attorney for Jefferson County. It is an open seat. The person who was the last elected to this position could not serve. As a result of that, the position is now open. I'm running as district attorney because I want to bring fairness, equality, and equity throughout Jefferson County in the district attorney's office. I am experienced for this position. I have been practicing law almost forty years now. I'm coming up on the fortieth anniversary. Thirty of those years has been as a defense attorney and as a civil attorney practitioner. Ten of those years have been as a federal prosecutor. That capacity as a federal prosecutor I learned in practice, in federal court, bringing individuals to court who committed offenses in this area as well. Worked with the Hoover Police Department on various assignments, also to prosecute individuals who committed crimes in the Hoover area. What I will tell you is, well, I've been teaching law for, this makes my thirtieth year, at Cumberland, in my old school of law where I teach constitutional rights, civil rights, and voting rights. I want to make sure that equity, equality, and fairness is in the district attorney's office. Must have your support in order to do that, so I'm asking you on June fifth to vote for Raymond Johnson, District Attorney, Jefferson County. Thank you very much.
Next we have Pete Johnson Davis, candidate for Circuit Court, Judge Place Sixteen. Before you get started, how many places are there?
Quite a lot. Mr. Mayor, and council president, and council members. My name is Peter Pete Johnson Davis, some of my friends call me Pete. I have been practicing law for twenty-two years. I was thinking, when this city was incorporated, I was three years old. And I remember as a child coming to Hoover, wanting to get on sixty-five to go down south out of there with my parents. So I kind of grew up with this city, and that is a world-renowned city. You all are doing a good job. I've been practicing law for twenty-two years, I've been a criminal defense lawyer for most of that time. Before that, I was a city jailer, the Birmingham City Jail. And I understand firsthand about the effects of crime. And when I finished law school, I started practicing with Henry Pennick, which is a family member, and then I branched out into my own firm, I'm partnering now with Davidson Scruggs. I've also been a part-time former personnel board hearing officer for the personnel board, so I have some judicial experience. And in my church, I also serve as one of the nine judges in our church to deal matters worldwide. So there too, I also have judicial experience from a police outreach standpoint. I'm running for this position because it's just another level for me to serve. I will be a fair judge if elected. My courtroom will respect the rule of law. As an attorney, I've seen some times where cases have been continued and continued, and that's really a burden on taxpayers. If I'm elected, I will run a very efficient and proficient courtroom. I believe the judicial economy has its place. And I will, I understand that we really have a crime wave going on there, but I will be a judge who will be fair. The rule of law will be respected in my courtroom, and I'm asking you to consider me for this position. Again, I live and breathe the law, I help people, I've done a lot of pro bono work, but I ain't even thinking about getting paid. So I understand what it's like to serve, as I said, this is just another opportunity for me to serve in this position. And I thank you all for allowing me to speak. Nice auditorium here, and I do shop in Hoover quite often, I have family and friends who live in the Hoover area, and it's a very fine community, and again, thank you all for allowing me to speak. And I also need volunteers for my campaign. If you all are interested in volunteering for my campaign, please go on the website, or go on my Facebook page, and like us, Pete Johnson, Facebook at Pete Johnson Davis. We would love to have you. And when I be able to pass out my little career quality.
Really, if you would just place it on the back counter, or unless you'd like to wait until after the council's over.
Thank you, sir.
Hand it out, maybe have a conversation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for listening.
Next we have Allison Boyd, candidate Shelby County probate judge. Not all of us can vote.
I know, I'm just in a very small little section of Hoover. It is, but I live in Hoover, so I wanted to make sure this is one stop that I had to make because this is my home. And I want to thank the mayor, and thank the council for allowing me time to come and speak to you. My name is Allison Boyd. For those of you who I do not know, let me give you a little bit about my background. I have lived in Shelby County and have worked in Shelby County for the last ten years. I worked for the district attorney's office for about eight and a half years, and in that role, I prosecuted primarily crimes against children. So the worst of the worst cases, those are the ones that I tried. About two, two and a half years ago, Judge Fermeyer, who was our current probate judge, had presided over our mental health court program, and I was the prosecutor in mental health court, and he asked me if I would come and join the probate office, which I did. And I joined his office in the role of programs coordinator for community mental health and legal counsel to the probate judge. In that role, I have had really a bird's eye view of what goes on in the probate office. I've been appointed as the special probate judge, so I've been able to hear cases the last two and a half years. I've heard over a hundred and fifty adoption cases, about the same number of commitment cases as well. So I've had really, I'm the only candidate who's had on-the-job training in this office. If elected, what I would like to do is make sure that I continue the legacy that's been left behind by Judge Fermeyer and his late wife Patricia Fermeyer. They have an excellent reputation, and they have made our probate office in Shelby County one of the ones that's the best in the state, and I certainly would like to continue that with the staff and everything that they have gathered. That is certainly something that I want to hold true to and continue their legacy. So I thank you all very much for your time tonight. I am asking for all of your support and your vote, those of you who live in Shelby County. On June fifth, please vote for Allison Boyd. And if you also, if you visit my Facebook page, it's Allison Boyd for Probate Judge, and then the website is AllisonBoydForProbateJudge.com, there's more information about me and my campaign. So thank you all very much.
We had a late addition request for Alice Martin, candidate for State Attorney General, but I believe she had a conflict come up, and she's going to probably ask to come back and speak at one of our next couple of meetings, assuming that Ms. Martin isn't here. I want to do some proclamation, Mr. Mayor, Women in Construction Week. Thank you, Mr. President. We have coming for us Akita Williams with Business Interiors, Holly Bratton with Ram Tool, Hannah Brown with AGC, Heather Gallagher with Robinson Morton, Rhonda Graham with MJ Harris, Stephanie Crane with MJ Harris, and Vannetta Woodbury with Grassfield and Gore. You two got the pick, right? We want to recognize women in construction, particularly this group of ladies that are with the Greater Birmingham Chapter of National Association of Women in Construction. We'd like to read a proclamation recognizing their efforts over the past fifty years.
Whereas the National Association of Women in Construction, or NAWIC, Greater Birmingham Chapter Number Fifty-three has distinguished itself over fifty years as the voice of women in construction in the metropolitan Birmingham area. And whereas the work done by the NAWIC Greater Birmingham Chapter Number Fifty-three has benefited the metropolitan Birmingham areas of community development and educational programs, whereas the NAWIC has unceasingly promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry, whereas the construction community represented by NAWIC Greater Birmingham Chapter Number Fifty-three has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trade careers, and a positive vision of the future. And whereas the NAWIC has sought to achieve successful results for the metropolitan Birmingham area and surrounding areas in a cooperative spirit with other organizations, now therefore, be to proclaim that I, Mayor Frank B. Perkato, who hereby recognize the NAWIC Greater Birmingham Chapter Number Fifty-three and its many dedicated volunteers for its steadfast work on behalf and in support of women in construction, do proudly proclaim that we would march forth through 2018 as Women in Construction Week. Encourage our citizens to congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments.
Salter, have you lost your job?
I have paid it over thirty.
Ellen?
Just for tonight.
Oh, okay. Next, mayor has narcolepsy awareness.
Yes, sir, we would like to recognize this very difficult chronic neurological disorder and proclaim and do a proclamation for them. We have Ms. Claire Oreama, and her husband Matthew. Thank y'all for coming tonight to help us through this.
Whereas narcolepsy is a chronic neurological disorder caused by the brain's inability to regulate sleep-wake cycles, and whereas narcolepsy affects an estimated one in every two thousand Americans, whereas narcolepsy is an under-recognized and under-diagnosed condition, and whereas the symptoms of narcolepsy, especially when undiagnosed, can lead to accidents, injuries, and problems with learning and working, and whereas narcolepsy affects people neurologically, socially, and emotionally, and whereas narcolepsy affects people of all ages with onset typically between the ages of fifteen and twenty-five. And whereas Narcolepsy Network is a national organization created to promote awareness of the disease and support for those who suffer from narcolepsy. Now therefore, I, Frank B. Perkato, Mayor of the city of Hoover, Alabama, do hereby proclaim Saturday, March tenth, 2018, to be Suddenly Sleepy Saturday, the day for narcolepsy awareness. Wherever I sit my hand, this fifth day of March, your role in 2018.
Thank you, mayor. Next is Resolution Fifty-seven seventy-eight-eighteen, Mr. Ford.
This resolution adopts the Hoover Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual attached to exhibit eight, Resolution.
Hoover approval resolution, give the sound of any. Second. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to open it up to the other members of the council before I start my first hour. Any questions on the council? Everyone received copies of questions that I had asked of Mr. Lewis and Mr. Rice after work session. I have a few of these that I still have concern about. Mr. Lewis did a very good job answering these to the best of his ability. In dealing with demotions within the city of Hoover, one question I had had to do if a person is promoted, and then it is found through no fault of their own that that position didn't work for them. The way the policy is written, it looks as though there is nowhere to enter or retreat to. And I would believe that, I don't know historically, the chiefs that are your mayor, department heads, may be able to help me understand a person that tried to do better, but they were good at what they did before, and now if they can't maintain that promotion, that they're basically separated from the city.
Yes, sir, if a position is not available, that is language that is in the current policy. That's not part of the revision.
All of this is language in the policy, it is language, so it still is based on the conversation.
Oh, certainly.
Not available.
Yes, and that revision is in there. And let me first of all say, we rarely have any demotions voluntarily or involuntarily in the city. And that's certainly, many times there are cases when we have these rare occasions that it's a position, that person has vacated a position that has, we have a lot of positions in the city and have really never had to, since I've been here my nine years, enter into this situation where there's not a position. Now, the problem arises in those situations is that if someone perhaps is promoted up from a one-income position, and then that lower-level position is subsequently filled, and then personally, if it's at the higher position, it's not able to meet the job needs or doesn't work out for whatever reason. Of course, you have no funded position available for them to go to. And that's why the section that's in here just certainly gives that person the opportunity to reveal that to the personnel review board, pay a grievance receipt. But obviously, if this was not for disciplinary grievances or anything like that, the city could certainly seek to make some sort of accommodation for them. But it's just a matter of whether that position is needed organizationally or, it's a doctor. It's an unfortunate situation if that were to occur without a doubt.
Thank you, sir. Talking about promotions in general, one of the new sentences states, "Departments are encouraged to fill vacancies in the classified service above the lowest grade level by the promotion or transfer of qualified regular status employees. But in all situations, may choose to accept applications from outside candidates." I feel this to be troublesome to the rank and file of the various departments within the city of Hoover, where if they have ten qualified, whether it's one or whether it's ten, and then you have somebody, let's say a battalion chief of Birmingham, who is greatly qualified, decided that he's ready to retire from Birmingham, he wants to come to Hoover and be a lieutenant. Obviously, he's going to be very qualified, and as he rolls up through the ranks of Birmingham, he or she may decide to apply for a lieutenant's position in Hoover. Seems that those qualifications would possibly outqualify any, say, fire department, engine company driver that wants to become an officer. How does the city plan on not allowing that to become commonplace?
Well, that is, that would be the decision of the department head or committee board to choose to, and this is how it occurs now, this is superfluous and existing language in the current policy. But the department heads and committee boards have that right to choose to recruit from outside city service, and of course, the city has a stellar record of promoting internally. Many of the employees here today have benefited from that, including myself, I'd like to say. But as the policy is written now, and of course, with this revision, it would continue to be, you don't want to restrict the ability of those department heads to go outside city service. You may have a situation where if one person qualifies, that person qualified, and by qualified, as far as the court is concerned, it means to meet the minimum requirements of the position. That person may not be fit for the job for whatever reason. That person may have disciplinary history, something like that. So you just don't want to, I think the goal of the city is to get the best and the brightest here. Most, the great majority of the time, that occurs from the internal ranks.
So what is to keep the hiring authority or the department head, whenever it may be, from making the decision that they're going to bring fresh personnel to levels of rank in the various departments of Hoover?
You really would not think any restrictions on that.
Right. Current language, you would talk for just a moment, because the language that I read is undermined, thus indicating new language. How is that position currently stated in the current policy? About promotional applicants.
Reese, I'd be glad to show that to you, read that to you.
Does it speak to bringing in outside applicants as well?
It does, sir, it's on the red line revision. It's going to be on page twenty-six, and at the bottom, item C, or currently reading, it is the is the intent of the city to remain aware of the need to fill vacancies with persons with the most ability. Nothing contained in this policy limits department head from considering applicants outside the city service who have been referred as provided in the employment process.
In another section, it talks about the referral. Nothing contained in this policy limits an appointing authority from considering applicants from outside the city service who have been referred as provided in the employment process. Typically, where would a referral come from? What that language is referring to is when a job is posted, and those applicants are screened with minimum requirements, that's the senior resources, the senior resources job to refer those that meet the minimum requirements to the appointment. So if I, as President of the City Council, knew somebody that would be a very good plug-in for the fire department, I just want to make sure that I don't have any opportunity to bias those making the decisions.
They would have to meet the minimum requirements. Those established on the front end, those are screened usually in pay share. And if a candidate who does not meet the minimum requirements is going to be seen by the appointing board.
And we're gonna deal with email communications and social media.
Yes, very good point. We do want to make sure that if this was adopted tonight, that the Section Seventeen, the new section email policy is retracted from that and retooling that policy a little bit, working with our new IT director. And we will commit to having a social media policy built in the second round.
Well, with the discussion we've had, I still have concerns about the promotional process. And having that, I'm going to be in a vote and would encourage others to consider the same. Any other questions from the council?
Mr. President, the way these things are written, document in general, things like, are encouraged to in May. To his question, with language like that, you honestly wouldn't make an exception if somebody went outside of that, and explained, okay, this is why I'm going outside of what's encouraged in the policy. You'd make an exception on that, wouldn't you? Or would you review it? How would that work? Because you're encouraging them to do something, but in this instance, like he was pointing out with the gentleman coming from Birmingham retired that wanted a lower position, that would be an exception, someone would make that hire. Would that come for you to be reviewed?
It could. I don't think anything in the policy necessarily would be my office, the authority to say no to it. But it's such a rare occasion that, I mean, I think it would spark some conversation. Okay, well, we've promoted internally for X number of years. What's the reason for that?
So you would, it would not be a situation where you denied it because you would say, well, the policy says we encourage you to do this, you didn't. You just have a conversation, but there's nothing that, in an instance like that, would prevent that person from being hired for the one? Thank you.
But as you stated earlier, there's nothing to keep that from the throne. Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Corley, if someone from another agency or with a background with another agency were to apply, and because these words are stated in the policy, what is the city's legal standing liability-wise to reject such an applicant?
To reject an outside applicant?
Yes, sir. If they are in fact more qualified, but they're not part of the ranking. Does the city have any liability?
Well, that's a high question, but I may for Mike Lewis and Mike Jackson on it, but I, of course, my understanding is that the current language of policy limits and provides for that, and that they may consider those technical requirements.
But we're also looking at changing various language texts. So you don't believe the city would incur any liability if a more qualified individual came forward and they took the city to court?
It would depend on the certain taxes.
Sorry?
I think it would depend on the specific certain taxes.
But the language in the text doesn't really help, does it?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Thank you. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? Seeing and hearing none, I'll turn to the police department.
Mr. Green? Mr. Lyman? Dr. Middlebrooke?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy? Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
The resolution passes. Resolution fifty-seven eighty-eight dash eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank DePerecato to execute a planning and engineering services for the San Associated Agency for the preparation of new subdivision regulations for the city.
Motion to continue until April sixteenth.
Second. Motion and second. This is a debatable motion, so if anybody has any comments or questions?
I prefer to call the chair, Dr. Middlebrooke. Is there any reason why April sixteenth?
After speaking to city staff and the mayor, the mayor feels like this date, they'll be ready to bring it back before the council.
I talked to Mr. Rice prior to the meeting. You'd be okay with calling the chair, Mr. Rice?
We want to be sure it doesn't get lost in the shuffle, so however the body chooses to handle that is fine, but we stand by the position that the subdivision regulations need to be rewritten. We understand concern about, we understand the questions about the current motion or resolution that's been placed before you. You know, I guess it would be to the chair's discretion if he would be willing to honor that April sixteenth date. Procedurally, however you guys decide to do it, it's fine. We don't want to lose this item between the cracks, between the couple of seats up there on the dais, because this is very critical for our staff, for our development community, and for projects that we have coming forward. So, you know, that's our position. We need to be able to rewrite the sub-rays. Whether the contract goes to this firm or not, at the proposed price or not, we're working on that diligently. We had set it as a goal to make sure that we're ready by the second April meeting, not supposed to sixteen. So as long as we can have an opportunity to bring this back and readdress it, we appreciate that.
I anticipate having whatever necessary conversations we're planning on.
We do. Yes, we do.
Mr. President, I would prefer the flexibility of calling to the chair, just because we've run into several situations with other things where we're not quite ready or whatever, and we need an extra week or whatever. I mean, it's unusual for us to name a date.
But to my point, the mayor's staff feels like April sixteenth gives them plenty of time. We have it set, and also to my point, we have a motion and a second, so it's up to...
Right, we're discussing it in private. Mr. President, this is a discussable one.
I think it's pretty common knowledge, I won't be here.
Mr. President, for me, Mr. Rice, can you go through the steps that you're planning to do between here and the sixteenth? And if it is a question that the council president will not be here on the sixteenth, could you lay it one more beat?
Absolutely. And Mr. Smith, I was not aware that you would not be here on the sixteenth after the event. Certainly, it's something that probably at this point deserves the full participation of the council. We plan to be ready by the sixteenth, but we don't have any issue with coming back at the first May meeting. Be real candid, if we're continuing to kill it, we oppose that. If we're continuing for flexibility, we can work with that. We feel like this is a critical issue, we'd like for it to be addressed, but we certainly can work with your schedule and understand why the...
I appreciate that, but you know, one of my big concerns wasn't necessarily about whether or not the activity with the positive approach, there's one on timing and finances.
Sure.
The city being in such dire straits as we seem to be, plus maybe fifty thousand, you don't have to until finances can be...
Well, the money's budgeted, and I know that we don't automatically spend every budget a dollar, but to Mr. Posey's question, we're approaching a number of different things. Posey, one is to go back to the firm that's conducting the comprehensive plan, find out if they have this capability, and if so, will there be any price benefit asking them to do it adjunctively to the comp plans? There may be an opportunity for savings. The next is because of the financial concerns, is to go back to the originally proposed firm and see if this is their best and final price, is there any efficiencies they can find? And then the third would be to seek additional engineering firms to submit proposals and price exploitations. We also have not fully completed the conversation with the Regional Planning Commission, and there's possibility, now we've looked at other communities and other efforts that have been undertaken through RCP, it appears that the overall sticker price is much more than this contract, but the cities match it less. So there's a possibility, as we flesh that out, that although more taxpayer dollars might be spent through that approach, fewer Hoover dollars might be spent. So there's some opportunity to flesh that out.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Casey, would you, would you only, in that one meeting, you said that one you're concerned...
But who said that?
That is a...
I'll amend my motion to May seventh, please.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other conversations from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. You have the opposed nade, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven eighty-eight dash eighteen, Mr. Corley.
Invitations to bid for medical supplies for Fire EMS, bid number eighteen dash zero zero one, present to sixty-two vendors listed on the City of Hoover vendor list. Bids were opened on Monday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen. One bid was received from Bounty Medical LLC. This resolution rejects this bid and authorizes the mayor to negotiate with this bidder for the purchase of medical supplies for Fire EMS, price not to exceed their quoted bid amount, to execute an agreement with the bidder to work to be performed.
Move to approve Resolution fifty-seven eighty-seven. Second. A motion, second. First, I'd like to thank both Mr. Powell and Chief Bentley for the information that they were able to garner and send to us today. It does seem in this case that those few cities that spend enough on these services that they do need to be, these, this company's been their lone bidder as well. So I want to thank y'all. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. You have the opposed nade, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven eighty-eight dash eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution concerns certain improvements to be made on the Warner Road in accordance with the plans prepared by the Alabama Department of Transportation and is designated as the Galleria Boulevard extension from Warner Road to Highway one fifty, grade drain base and pavement. This resolution proves, one, plans submitted to the city on file with the city parks office, and, two, the location of the project as shown on the plans as stated out by ALDOT; and, three, authorize ALDOT to proceed with creating, draining, paving, and otherwise improving of the project in accordance with the plans. This resolution allows ALDOT full access to any existing streets for construction of such project, as well as other items listed in the resolution.
Move to approve Resolution fifty-seven eighty-eight... A motion and second, Mr. Westover, and one give us a very short synopsis. This has been a part of this project, it's been about a good thing or twenty years, I think.
That's correct. Mr. Smith, this is actually a part of the third phase of the flyover, the original flyover project, so that's how long this project's been around. The county took over this project, so it is a county-sponsored project, although we are financially a part of the project with the county. And this is just a standard agreement that ALDOT requires as part of the project moving forward.
Any comments or questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Westover, did you mention the other night work session, that the city was obligated to...
That's correct, yes, sir.
He's sponsored by the...
That's correct.
Any other questions? Any from the audience, any questions from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. You have the opposed nade, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven eighty-nine dash eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes the city attorney to seek an opinion from the Alabama Attorney General concerning Act two thousand seventeen dash four 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 and its application to the City of Hoover.
Move to approve Resolution fifty-seven eighty-nine...
Second.
A motion and second, Mr. Lyman, would you please give a short explanation why the council is asking this of the Attorney General's office?
Yes, sir. This is a request of the Attorney General of Alabama to really clarify a deal passed by the Alabama Legislature in the two thousand seventeen regular session that allows municipalities to alter the on-premise sale of alcohol from noon until ten o'clock. The statute itself has some rather ambiguous language that we're really wanting some clarification on, on how we move forward, whether we can by ordinance change the time, or whether it must be a referendum of the citizens of Hoover, or whether it should be a referendum by the whole state of Alabama with a constitutional amendment. So in two to three weeks, we expect to have an answer back, and we of the council will know how to proceed from there.
Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. You have the opposed nade, the ayes have it. Resolution fifty-seven ninety-eight dash eighteen, Mr. Corley.
This resolution authorizes Mayor Frank DePerecato to execute a lateral assignment of development agreement, as well as any other documents necessary to effectuate the assignment of the development agreement between the city and the village across Gap LLC, in order to assign the payment of development incentives to Bank World South as lender for the village across Gap in the event of default in financing charges.
Motion to approve Resolution fifty-seven ninety-eighteen?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Corley, Mr. Cor, let us just lay the record in ten. Would you please explain why the city is involved in this process?
Yes, sir. In the development agreement, it states that the developer can sign the development agreement to a third party or lender only with the consent of the city. So in order to obtain the consent, the city, the developer, requested to put it before the council. This would be additional security for the loan with their bank to develop the project.
Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. You have the opposed nade, the ayes have it. Next, we're gonna have a public hearing to consider a petition for annexation submitted by Elizabeth Vaughn, Executive Director, Freshwater Land Trust, for the annexation of two hundred fifty-nine point two acres located between Ross Bridge Parkway and Shades Crest Road. This was continued from the November twentieth meeting of last year. Anybody here would like to speak for or against? Ms. Smith, please give your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Liba Vaughn. I'm the Executive Director of the Freshwater Land Trust, and I'm here to speak on this annexation. We are a twenty-two-year-old nonprofit organization that works to preserve land for parks and trails and open space. And I bet many of you know about some of our projects. You've been to Red Mountain Park, or the Rotary Trail downtown, or the brand-new, to-be-open in two weeks, Vulcan Trail, that will run from Richard Arrington to Greensprings. Then you know some of our projects. And right now, we have about a hundred and fifty acres of protected green space in the City of Hoover, and with this annexation, that will bring it up significantly. And we look forward to hoping to partner with you on this piece, and I'm really glad that you're considering it.
I know the city appreciates the opportunity to give this consideration. I think it's a great opportunity for the city.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? This is a public hearing. Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Corley, second reading of ordinance seventeen dash twenty-three fifty-five.
This ordinance rearranges, alters, and extends the city's corporate limits to include property owned by the Freshwater Land Trust, as shown on map, as the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number...
Mr. President, I move for the adoption of ordinance number seventeen-two-three-five-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Leiter?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. This annexation action, the city has two ways to have been able to deal with this, is by the halfway rule, which we would have multiple annexation votes until such time that all of it was in, or the hundred-and-eighty-day rule. City has chosen the hundred-and-eighty-day rule regarding expended the first ninety days, and so this action tonight will not become valid until ninety days from tonight. Great, Mr. Corley.
After the date of publication.
Ninety days after the date of publication.
Correct.
All right, thank you. And next, we're going to have a first reading of ordinance eighteen dash two-three-six-oh, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance provides that home occupation may be conducted as a permitted principal use in a residential zoning district, only following completion of an application by the requister, and review and approval of such application of the building official or his designated compliance with the requirements established in this ordinance, and this modifies the current municipal code, which classifies a home occupation as a conditional use. This ordinance provides that daycare home centers, group daycare centers, and night care facility home centers, as defined in the ordinance, may operate within residential zoning districts as a conditional use as currently allowed by existing zoning regulations, pending compliance with requirements established in this ordinance.
This is first reading, the second reading, consideration for adoption will be Monday, March nineteenth. Mr. Wyatt, do you have anything you'd like to present this evening, so the council and citizens can be prepared for the second reading, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Corley just said, this will allow staff to review it on speed of the process. It's very business-friendly, allow someone to come in and see the requirements, and then let us review it with them, and have him sign an affidavit, pay him a fee, and then allow us to go through it.
Very good. Any questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Is there a bid for the application? Is there a fee for the application?
Yes, sir. Fifty dollars, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Corley?
Mr. Lopez, is the fee fifty dollars to apply for business license?
It's a one hundred dollar fee.
One hundred?
Yes, I think it's a hundred dollars, I'm correct.
Thank you, sir.
One hundred.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Lopez, you, we talked about this morning session, was, what was the figure on the outstanding licenses that we could get in with this, with this ordinance?
How many do we have outstanding?
How many outstanding?
Right now, as of today, I think it's in the two-hundred-and-twenty range of actual applications on, many more that we've had that, you know, said when it does change, they'll come down.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Corley, I know there was a small change in the wording of the ordinance that caused us to have another first reading. Can you go over the change that existed from the first version to now? So may I consider suspending the rules and go ahead and take a vote on this, please?
The only substantive change, or the primary change, was on page seven, in the definition of patrons under the requirements for home occupation, and it was stated that the home occupation, I'm sorry, it's a limitation of patrons. The number and frequency of patrons on the premises for any reason related to the home occupation do not members of residential families, shall be in keeping with residential character of the neighborhood in which the home occupation is located. Previously, it restricted any patrons who are not members of residential families.
President, given the small change in that wording, I would, if you would entertain another motion, I would move to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of the ordinance.
Second. We have a motion and a second. This is not debatable, so anyone, no vote, removes the opportunity to vote to see. Any questions, please call the room.
Mr. President, can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
One, one issue or one condition that makes this so much better is that once we review and the applicant comes in, understands the requirements, if we do get a complaint, or we do have any concerns that the neighborhood raises, then we can send them for PNC for conditional use.
Very good, sir. Clerk?
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Leiter?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. So, Mr. Corley, second read?
This ordinance provides that a home occupation may be conducted as a principal permitted use in a residential zoning district, only following completion of an application by the requister, and review and approval of such application of the building official or his designated compliance with the requirements established in this ordinance. This modifies the current municipal code, which classifies a home occupation as a conditional use. This ordinance provides that daycare home centers, group daycare centers, and night care facility home centers, as defined in the ordinance, may operate within residential zoning districts as a conditional use as currently allowed by existing zoning regulations, pending compliance with the requirements established in this ordinance.
Mr. President, I'll move for adoption of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-three-six.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the room.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Leiter?
Aye.
Dr. Middlebrook?
Aye.
Mr. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Posey?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye. The ordinance is adopted. Item fifteen, change order number one, Carson and G Construction, Radix Drive roadway improvements project.
Double, double.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Item fourteen is first reading of ordinance eighteen dash twenty-three sixty-one, Mr. Corley.
This ordinance rearranges, alters, and extends the city's corporate limits to include property owned by the SIR Properties Trust, as shown on the map attached to the ordinance.
This is, that is a first read. The second reading and consideration will be Monday, March nineteenth. Now, item fifteen, change order number one, Carson and G Construction LLC, Radix Drive roadway improvements project, Mr. Corley.
Mr. Chairman, this is a list of several items that we had to walk through last week on the projects, and found a few things that we need to prove the project, or work with the adjacent property owner, make some revisions for him that he's requested. One thing that was left off, and we're going to hear is a changeling fence for district protection. And this change is seventy-eight thousand, which has been the attention, and it is, even though it is an increase, the project is still in progress.
Any comments or questions from the council? From the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Move to approve the change order?
Second.
A motion and a second, once again, from the council and from the audience. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nade, the ayes have it. Next, we have an ABC application for special events retail, Divo Brady's St. Patrick's Day Celebration, to be held March seventeenth, in the parking lot in fifty-five nineteen Grove Boulevard, Suite One-O-One.
Mr. President, I always like the front ones, so I'll move to approve the ABC application for Divo Brady's St. Patrick's Day Celebration.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the council? Any from the audience? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nade, the ayes have it. Mr. Leiter, pay the bills.
I've reviewed the bills and removed any payment in full as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed nade, the ayes have it. Next, comments or questions? First, I would like to, once again, commend Amanda Gordon on the excellent program you had with Southern Voices. I think that you have taken what Zelinda started and just making it better over here.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of comments. I see our school board, somebody members of the school board here, Vice President Greg Kelly, Diana Bobbin, congratulations, Spane Park Girl Basketball Team, seven eight champs. And you haven't seen the scores, fifty-six, twenty-six, and I think they subbed in, subbed out the third quarter, they subbed out the stars. So that was a pretty convincing win, but this is their first championship at Ball Homes, congratulations to them, Hank Cole Chase. Also, first round of community meetings for school safety will start tomorrow, March sixth, Spane Park Auditorium, and March eighth, at Hoover High School Auditorium. Lastly, I want to say to T.G., Dersis Public Safety, you know, Coach, I mean Officer Bryant, I know we've probably seen an article with him on CNN, and I tell you, it means a lot to parents. If you haven't met any of these SROs, they're in schools. Per his quote in office, in the first portion of it, he'll take a bullet for them, and that wasn't just talking. They really are passionate about those kids, and I had the pleasure of going to Spane Park and running into Officer Ava, the drug dog, and when I talk to the teachers and the students, if you would just watch this dog in action, some kids that are so-called maybe loners may not have many friends, and they see that dog in the brains of their day. It offers a sense of safety, and also, it offers a sense of, you know, kids being careful in what they do, because they know once she goes into action, begins to sniff or certain drugs, there's a resistance against any type of foolishness that may go on. So I just thank the police department and department for all they do. Say that a lot, but small things like that go a long way and make people feel safe in school. So thank you for all you do, thank you for the school system as well.
Mr. President, real quick, there's a former councilman, Joe Reeves, in the audience tonight, and so I understand a little bit, a little bit under the weather, so it's great to see you here, and I'm glad to see you in the garden.
Glad to get in, it was a pleasure tonight. He said he couldn't sit far enough back where we could see him. Having several school board members and a not-so-long-ago board member, do you have anything you'd like to bring up? Just taking a...
I would, I would like, if I could, Mr. Smith...
You have to come down, sir. Please give your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Stephen Bradley, twenty-four oh one, Metal Art Drive, Hoover. Mr. Murphy, could you clarify what you mean by having to run into the police officer? The drug dog?
No.
Is there anything else we need to know?
No, not for me.
Okay. I was real worried about that, thank you.
I was gonna ask whether or not the dog came over and attacked next to you. I don't know. Is there apology?
Mr. Bradley, was that your comment?
It was, sir.
Okay.
Mayor, do you have anything?
Do, want to congratulate Dr. Alice Turner at River Chase Elementary School. They were recognized and awarded the twenty-eighteen Blue Ribbon Lighthouse School Award. This is not something that you apply for, you are recognized, you are sought out for the excellence at your school, so this is another fine example of what we do in the city of Hoover, and how outstanding our schools are, they mean to our children's education as well.
Perhaps we should honor both with a future proclamation, giving them their dues. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? Mr. Schultz. Oh wait, Mr. Schultz, I saw another hand that doesn't get to speak nearly as often, so we'll let him go first. Come on down, sir. Please give us your name and address, because once Schultz gets down here, we'll probably all fall asleep at night.
Mr. President, my name is James Hutch, and I've lived in Birmingham area all my life.
Can you give us your current address?
I live in fifty-two oh one Park Crest Drive.
Thanks, sir.
I was born and raised in Eastlake, Woodlawn High School, and made some extra money, I joined the Alabama National Guard, and during the Korean War, was called into active duty. And then when I returned, I married, moved to Enslie, then Fairfield, and at the time, my father-in-law passed away, and my mother-in-law had to move in with us, and we had to a house that wasn't compatible to an older person that was handicapped. So we started looking around, and we decided we'd have to build a house that was compatible for a handicapped person. We decided to move into Hoover in nineteen ninety-four, and we built a house there, and the contractor built it, handicapped cable. Everything was fine for a year. My wife contracted ovarian cancer and died in nineteen ninety-eight. Her mother, who was in the house with us, didn't have any place, a person to keep her then, so she had to go to a nursing home and died two years later. Now, you ask me why I'm here, and that's because of a subject that I read about last council meeting, and that's the airborne situation. I'm not an official spokesperson or any representative of airborne, but I have heard about the incident in River Chase, and some of the proposed changes that are being contemplated. Also, the same story was on ABC thirty-three forty, and if you saw that segment, you saw the reporter standing on my back porch, giving his talk about the problem in Hoover. The ABC thirty-three forty reporter came to my front door and asked if I knew about the problem. I shut the door on him, and he said, okay. As the newscast showed, he went from door to door in my neighborhood, and couldn't find a single person to talk to him about it. He found one woman in a cul-de-sac across from my house that he talked to, and asked her what she thought about the Airbnb problem in Hoover. And she said something like, well, they're building a hotel right around the corner from us, and I don't see anything wrong with it. Now, I understand the man that was here last meeting, I believe his name was Price, he lived in a cul-de-sac in River Chase, and he was complaining because of the people next door parking in his, from his house, and in his area, and he couldn't get out. Well, everybody knows that a cul-de-sac is around, and there are houses, and it's got a big wide lot in the back and there in the front. They're not even parking in front of most cul-de-sac houses, maybe one car. If you had been in my neighborhood on Super Bowl Sunday, you would have seen the people in my cul-de-sac, right across the street from me, up there, all parked in front of my house, because there's no room to park in a cul-de-sac. He said that he saw a man sitting in a car in front of his house... He said that he saw a man sitting in a car in front of his house and asking what was going on over there, and they told him that, this man told him rather, that he had rented the house for a wedding party through Airbnb. He said no one lived in the house, and it was just rented to unknown persons from all over the country, and you don't know anything about your neighbors. And out-of-state tags are always there somewhere. Let me say something about out-of-state tags sitting in front of people's houses. Not long ago, I had a couple in my home, and they had Texas tags on them, on their cars, two cars with Texas tags. They happened to be two Auburn students that had come to Hoover to go to the grotto area and see what the sites were around town. They didn't come from Texas, they came from Auburn. So out-of-state tags, they'll always tell a story. Even an Alabama tag sitting in your driveway don't tell a story that a man came from New Hampshire down here looking for a job, and he rented an Alabama car. So tags don't mean nothing. A few days ago, my neighbors and I were in the back of our houses, and all of our locks meeting in the back, no fences, it's all just open, and we were talking, and one of the neighbors, in passing, mentioned, did you see the thing on TV about the ABC reporter coming to our door? I said, well, actually, they were talking about me. And there was two of my neighbors, two couples, one of them has a small child. They all said, well, they couldn't believe it. They had never seen anything around my house that had ever indicated any problems. One lady in particular is a head nurse at UAB Hospital, and she said that they had used Airbnb many times, and she thought it was a great idea that my house was built, actually, with two families, and it's been vacant since my wife died, the part in my mother-in-law's stadium, it's been vacant all these years. So my daughter thought, well, Dad, this is a good idea for you to make a little extra money. And who's not looking for extra money these days? Also, I know of a couple, a young couple, that's just graduated from college, and they have a condominium, and it has three bedrooms, and they have two men, one in each bedroom, that's working down here in Hoover. And they have a place to stay, they leave before daylight, they come back after dark, all they want is a place to sleep, and that's all. And they're very reasonable with that. I might mention that hotels in Hoover range at from a hundred to three-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars a night. If you've ever gone on a site of any of the hotels around Hoover, you'll find that they're in that range. And up near Birmingham, near UAB, they're even higher. I realize that Airbnb has some problems with some owners, but one bad apple, you don't throw the whole barrel out. And I know that there are nursing homes around town that have problems, but we don't close a nursing home. This one instance in River Chase was very unfortunate. However, I feel that Airbnb is not only a way for a retired person like myself to make a little, well, a little money on the side, and help us with our everyday bills, and maybe a little extra. I know a place in Washington, DC, that rents whole houses, three bedrooms, living room, kitchen, dining room, the whole works, and they're in the business of renting homes in Washington, DC. They don't have just one home, they've got dozens around DC. The only difference in the high house and Airbnb, the high house is all rooms in one building. Airbnb's rooms are scattered out throughout the city. And each owner is responsible for their own property. You can get a good review, you can get more people. You get a bad review, you don't get any more. So before you let one instance ruin an enterprise for a lot of folks, rethink your response. One other thing, Airbnb has just invested thirteen million dollars in a restaurant reservation business, as reported in the Birmingham news. They got six-hundred-and-fifty restaurant tables in the country. Also, Airbnb is expected to pursue an initial public stock sale in the next twelve to sixteen Lastly, Airbnb has a private marketed valuation of about thirty-one billion dollars, and it tends to be a one-stop shop for travel. Now, I'm not an expert on Airbnb, but if you have some questions, I'll try to answer.
I appreciate you, you are an advocate.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate your comments. That subject is not before us tonight, but we will certainly keep you in mind when it comes back up for discussion.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Hodges, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Schultz.
My name is Robert Schultz, three forty-eight, Alamo Road Drive. Earlier today, I received a phone call from a Jim Kalper, who works for Santech Services. He got my number from Mr. Green, who I had spoken to last week regarding some of the issues that have been posted on social media regarding the Santech services. We talked for about an hour and had a very good discussion. He asked all kinds of questions as to what was going on, and it seems that the issue that we're having, and there's multiple issues, are isolated to certain parts of the city, not to all of the city. So I made a recommendation to him. I felt that most of us are tired of calling the city number, or tired of calling the Santech number, we're getting frustrated, most of us are just frustrated with what's going on. So his response was, well, you're correct, but we can't fix what we don't know what is going on, and I agree with that, and I thought that was a valid point. So I suggested to him that on the Santech site, they put up a portion for us where we can post our address as to, in a brief synopsis of the problem, which he said he's going to do, and that will allow them to isolate the problem, address the problem. And I think at this point in time, at least they're being proactive, which is something that we did not see in the past. I believe Santech wants to fix it. I don't believe that their people at times are allowing them to fix the problem, and so this is one step, assuming they go through with it, that is going to allow us to move forward with this, because none of us like to see the containers in the middle of the driveway, we don't like to see trash on the street. And while we were talking, I was driving through Hoover, and three houses that we passed, the container was right in the middle of the driveway. So I felt really good about the conversation, I appreciated him calling me. Hopefully, something will come of this. Just wanted to let you know, thank you.
Thank you. Sounds like maybe a good section of the headway. Anything else from the audience? Anything else from the council? Mayor? If not, entertaining most of the time. Motion and second? All in favor? And leave.